Brought to you by our new marine mom, Tara.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Zirinsky. All right, roll call, please. Ms. Zumba.
Mr. Kuzick?
Present.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mrs. Spurro is absent. Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Zirinsky?
Here.
All present except Mrs. Spurro.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve the minutes of May 3, 2018.
Motion to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
Second? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Mr. Kuzick. Okay, next thing on the agenda is a presentation of a proclamation. Mr. McClure, would you please present proclamation?
We had spoken with the subject of the proclamation's widow today. Unfortunately, I do not believe she had the opportunity to be with us, so, but we will be, we will be taking the proclamation to her, and let me just present it. Whereas Robert "Bob" Lrod Duro was a celebrated singer, composer, and pianist, best known for jazz and his compositions for children, and whereas Bob Duro shared his music and his talents with the people of Northampton County, performing regularly at the Deerhead Inn in Delaware Water Gap, and whereas millions of American children have learned math and grammar principles from listening to Schoolhouse Rock on Saturday mornings, and whereas Bob Duro, a longtime resident of Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania, passed away on April 23, 2018, at the age of 94. Now, therefore, I, Lamont G. McClure, Northampton County Executive, on behalf of the residents of Northampton County, recognize the musical talents of Bob Duro that enriched his community and made a whole world a little brighter, and I thank him for his artistic contributions.
Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, if you look in front of everybody has a CCAP County Commissioner pamphlet here. I have Mr. Doug Hill, Executive Director of CCAP, who wants to say a few words to us.
Thank you, and it is an absolute delight to be here with you. CCAP, for those of you in the audience who don't know, is the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, and we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan association that provides legislative and regulatory representation, training, technology, insurance, litigation, research, and other services on behalf of all the Commonwealth 67 counties. Yes, I did place in front of you a packet of information about the association, a little bit more detail for the newer members of the council, refresher for the veterans. To give you an idea of the scope of things that we do on your behalf, in there you will find legislative priorities for this session, the information on our technology services, our insurance programs, some things on our training programs, the tentative schedule for our annual conference that's coming up in Gettysburg in August, and some information on the National Association of Counties, and I know you're a participant with that organization as well, they are our Washington DC counterpart. CCAP has been around since 1886. Its primary mission is to provide legislative representation and training, but all of the other services that we've expanded that I've indicated to you are really part of a shift in mission back in the 80s where we said what we are really about is to help you meet the needs of your constituents, and so if it's creating a marketplace for you for insurance or if it's filing an amicus brief on your behalf on litigation that affects counties statewide, that's what we're about. Now, the reason I'm here tonight isn't a sales pitch or anything, it's just that, kind of the pastoral call, where first I want to make sure that we are meeting your service needs, that we're doing for you what you're expecting, but the other side of it too is for me, because what I get out of going out into the field is really seeing how that policy we're working on in Harrisburg and Washington touches what you're doing and whether we're matching up and whether we're understanding the issues and the solutions we're working on are going to translate well locally. It was a great pleasure to sit in on a couple of your committee meetings this afternoon to hear some of the issues that your peers are dealing with. The civil service issue is front and center, and children and youth caseworker shortages are a problem in literally every county in the state right now, something that we've been working on, in part by trying to improve the funding, in part by wrestling through all those issues with the Civil Service Commission. We had some legislation we passed a couple of years ago to try to update their practices to how current hiring practices work in the real world and the technological world. They've chosen not to wholly implement all of that yet. We have additional legislation that was just reported out of committee a couple of weeks ago to try to move that forward, but separate from that, we've also worked with other counties where the federal requirement is very simply to have a merit-based system, and so a number of counties have adopted their own merit-based system so they don't use the Civil Service Commission. So there's, that kind of gives you a sense of the scope and different direction we take on many things. The top issues coming up right now, of course, Commonwealth budget, and we anticipate an on-time budget this year. That's the good news. The bad news is it's pretty much a hold-the-line budget, and which for us means relative, continuation of relatively stagnant funding that we've seen over the last decade. The, you know, on the other hand, that means we aren't seeing the cuts that have been proposed previously, and so when the public understands that somewhere between 40 and 60 percent of the typical county's budget is based on federal and state money, state money and federal pass-through, and where about 80 to 90 percent of what counties do is based on state and federal mandate, there seems to be an obligation there for the state to step up and contribute its fair share. The other side of it, though, is also being sure that we get the laws written in ways that allow us to most efficiently provide the services so we don't have to waste money on children and youth paperwork and all the rest of it. And so I'm going to sit down, I'm going to listen, I'm really enjoying what I'm learning from all of you today. I appreciate the amount of activity you've all, engagement you've had with the association. We'll be coming up soon on appointments for our policy committees for next year, so if you have an interest in any of those, and it really covers the waterfront, please be in touch with us. But again, if there's anything you need from me, my business card's in there, and I hope to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did tell Mr. Hill we'll try and get him on the road soon.
Yeah, we'll get him on the road. Next thing we have is courtesy of the floor, I have one person sign up, Gus Diarmis? Diarmis? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Armis. Thank you.
All right, good evening, distinguished members of the county council. I'm only here to express a view that I have regarding some of the prohibition in the parks, in the county parks against flying drones, which I encountered about a week ago. There's absolutely no way to enjoy this hobby, which is what I have to do as a drone pilot, and one of, in a park such as Louise Moore, that's the particular park that I'm talking about. I was there flying the drone, and one of the workers there approached me and said that it was not allowed, and then, of course, showed me the sign, and I realized, yes, you cannot fly that. I was surprised because I'd been there in January, and there were other people there with drones as well, and they were flying, and I thought, well, there was no issue then. I was told that it was adopted by the county council as a rule not to allow flying drones. For what reason, they couldn't really, the person couldn't really tell me, other than the fact that, well, it's a liability issue, of course. As far as liability's concerned, while a lot of other things can happen, you throw a ball and get hit, that's a liability issue, and I'm sure you can throw a football at the, in the park. You can fly kites in the park. I would suggest that the council look into this and adopt a policy that would allow residents such as myself, a longtime resident of the county, by the way, to enjoy this hobby in a safe environment. The park is way open, no wires, no other homes, and it's one of the safest places that you can actually fly one of these devices where you can keep an eye on it within line of sight. And so again, that the county would adopt a policy to allow this flying of drones, maybe with some common sense rules, such as an area where you can take off and land the drones, keeping it within a certain height, not to, not to fly over people, and intentionally, of course, and to fly in a responsible manner.
How would you enforce somebody not flying it over people?
Well, the same way that it's enforced right now, one of the persons that is there is to say, you know, you can't fly it.
Mr. Dietz.
Yeah, I'd be happy to sit down, maybe the executive, and maybe parks, there's a, you can get a UAV certificate from the FAA, which you go through a course, and it talks about not flying over people 400 feet high.
Yes.
There's a whole spot behind it, so maybe we could have it with the parks that, you know, you need to have this certification to fly it in the park.
Similar to the certification those people who fly the drones for 69 News have.
Correct.
Because I saw them, and they told me all about their certifications and their form.
Yeah, and it's, and you fill it, you know, to the online course through the FAA, and you submit it to them, and then they give you a little certificate out of it, and, you know, it is relatively safe, and we talked about it, you know, the parks like that are a great spot for it, and especially, you know, the ones that are smaller that, you know, you'd get on, you know, the little kids would get for Christmas, won't hurt anybody, you know, versus you probably are more in danger of, you know, getting hit with a ball from a baseball.
Well, listen, thank, thank you. I'm going to appoint Mr. Dietz to the newly formed Drone Commission.
Great, great.
And, you know, since he's our resident pilot, he can, I mean, we should look in this, because I don't remember passing anything about flying drones in the parks, so, I mean, I, but we've been here for seven years, so I don't know. John?
We have adopted and changed the policies and procedures and regulations for county properties. It is somewhere, Linda, if you could look it up and get it to us.
Yeah, get it to Mr. Dietz, and we'll figure.
I do remember that we have made amendments to it in the past.
Yeah, as far as I, as far as I know, it was a blanket prohibition of...
Let's just say the last time we made amendments to it, I don't recall it being brought up.
Okay, well, thank you, sir, we have to move along with thank you, we'll get, we'll get, get with Mr. Dietz after the meeting. Thank you.
That would be a good compromise, just one thing as far, but I'm, I'm not a professional drone pilot, it's only a hobby.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to council, courtesy of floor? Seeing no one, we'll move into confirmation of appointments. Mr. McGee, you have, we have met last night Personnel Committee, and you have quite a few of them, sir.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointment, as indicated thereafter. Area Agent, Area Agency on Aging Board, appointments, Elizabeth Webb, term to expire July 1, 2020. The following term to expire, July 1, 2020. Elizabeth Webb, Mary Ann Schweitzer, Carol Durka, and Joyce Lambert. Would you like me to read them all?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay. Gaming Revenue and Economic Redevelopment Authority, term to expire December 31, 2022. Kenneth M. Kraft and Kevin Lot. Greystyle Advisory Board, reappointment, term to expire April 19, 2020. Mary Ann McAvoy, McAvoy. And Lehigh-Northampton Transportation Authority Board, appointment, term to expire March 2, 2019. Dawn Ferrerhart. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, appointment, elected official, term to expire December 31, 2018. Janelle Connolly. And the Lehigh Valley Workforce Board, appointment, private sector representative, term to expire June 30, 2020, and it would be Danielle Adams. So moved.
Thank you. We had, like I said, we had the committee meeting, I think everybody was here last night. Any questions or concerns or, on these appointments?
I move with the vote.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Warner. Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the County Executive's report. Mr. McClure?
Thank you, sir. I know you have a very busy agenda tonight, Mr. President, so I'll attempt to be brief. We had a primary election on Tuesday, which we had, as you know, very severe weather in the afternoon, and some of our polling locations experienced some temporary power outages. There were trees down that blocked access to some of our polling locations, and I will say to you that emergency management, 911, were all over these issues, helping, helping the places that needed power restored to have it restored. There were generators that went on in some of the other facilities, so voting continued almost completely unabated despite the fact that we had this tornado attic, we didn't, I don't think we had any tornadoes touched down here, but this very serious wind storm that we had, so credit to our, our judges of election and our volunteers at the, at the election, at the polling places, and quite frankly, our folks in voter registration did a fabulous job carrying on your primary election under pretty, pretty extraordinary circumstances in some of the polling locations. The P3 mess, I have some updates. I want to, again, highlight for you some of the challenges that we're having, but some of the progress that we're making. Under the contract, Krieger was responsible for obtaining temporary easements. They weren't, they were unable to do so. Fortunately, we have, you know, Mr. Dirtiger, who's a project manager, and Mr. Barron, and some of his staff, who are very capable, working with the assessment office. We found out who owned the property, got the temporary easements, and we're moving this project forward. We've now asked Krieger to pay us for the temporary easements, and they have acknowledged that they will be paying us for them. The necessity to do this was because Krieger had started to do work on, I think it's what, Bridge 202, before we actually had the easements obtained from the landowners. It could have been a serious problem. Fortunately, Mr. Dirtiger has some diplomatic skills, and he, and we also, we also very quickly got the easements taken care of, the condemnation that you approved and accepted, and we paid the McEwans their money for their easements, and in a sign of my absolute sincerity that I'm going to finish this P3 project, there is a check for in excess of $3,000 with my name on it to Ronald Dell Angle. So, if I had any intention, so, so, I joke, but the GPA has, has made the accusation that McClure doesn't intend to see this project through, and if McClure didn't intend to see this project through, my name wouldn't be on a check that went to Ronald Dell. So, Bridge, the Bridge 202 work is starting. That's our, that's our report in that regard. I don't have anything else?
Thank you.
But most of, the rest of what I'd say you, you received in committee meetings over the last two days.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda, old business, public hearing on the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of Northampton County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Providing for the Adoption of Certain Procedures Related to the Solicitation and Award of Public Contracts Within Northampton County, Providing for Certification Requirements for Public Contractors, Providing for Certification Requirements for Subcontractors to Public Contractors, Providing for Public Contract Review Process, Repealing Inconsistent Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances Containing a Savings Clause and Providing for an Effective Date." Mr., it was introduced by Mr. McGee and Mr. Heckman at the May 3 meeting, public hearing and debate is tonight. Is anybody from the audience or the public, I'm sorry, want to speak to council about this matter? Seeing none, county council, we had our meeting last night on this again, in a committee meeting. Any other questions, follow-ups on this ordinance? Mr. Kuzick?
Just a follow-up, I had asked for a copy of the responsible contractor certification, and one was provided.
And I'm glad you did.
You know, I thank you for that, and I would ask, I see we have some amendments, I would ask that we also include this as an exhibit, as part of this ordinance to be amended.
Want to make a motion to do the amendment?
Well, we do have this three changes that have been submitted, and I would like to just have this form attached as an exhibit.
The form we all have.
So, yes.
Okay, next, a motion for amendment?
So, a motion for the, the three amendments that have been presented, and they're highlighted on this handout. Can we do all of it together?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Mr. Solicitor?
It can be attached in my motion.
It'll be attached.
It can be attached.
Okay, so we have a motion to attach? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, in regards to the motion, are there any questions, discussions?
And we're also attaching the three changes that I believe Mr. McGee and the solicitor have requested as well.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have that.
This paper?
Yeah, this.
All right, so we have, we have...
This, the motion that I'm making is to make these three changes as presented by the solicitor, Mr. McGee, and to add this responsible contractor as an attachment.
Oh, okay, now I got it.
Okay.
So we have the motion, and a second, everybody understands it? Any other questions in regards to, who seconded it? I think Mr. McGee did.
You seconded it?
Laurie did.
Laurie did. Sorry, Ms. Vargo Heffner seconded it. I keep, yeah, sorry, Laurie. Any other discussion on this?
Just on the amendment, right.
On the amendment? Okay, since there's no more discussion, call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, so now we have an amended ordinance. Is anybody from the public wish to speak to council about this, this amended ordinance that's in front of us? Seeing no one, county council, Mr. Dietz?
Yes, just want to reiterate what I said yesterday in the committee meeting, which overall, I think this is good, I think you addressed the, you know, accountability and qualifications of, you know, that the contractors are within good standing. I do have an issue still with item 11 on there about the, that they must participate in a Class A apprenticeship program for the past three years. I think that really is strictly a union thing, and I think there's very many contractors here in the Northampton County that will be left out of it because they don't participate in that. I reached out to many contractors, and many of them don't for various reasons. One, some of their contracting is so narrow that they actually don't fit the qualifications to give a, a trainee, all the qualifications to get through the journey, and to actually be in an approved program through the Department of Labor. So even if they wanted to, their contracting is so narrow that they wouldn't actually be able to apply to do it. The other parts of it are, like I said, I think it really replied, you know, without saying it, it's only unions that would really have that apprenticeship in there. I know I gave an example yesterday about the company I worked for, it didn't really apply to Mr. Kraft there. I think another perfect example, and I think some on council here may agree with it, is, you know, so I reached out, if we were to put solar panels on some of our properties here, and I reached out to a couple of installers, one of being Trinity Solar.
Oh, thanks.
They do not have an apprenticeship program.
No, they don't.
And, and a few other installers that I spoke to do not as well, and it would be a well over $400,000 project that could not be done by someone that's actually basically local-based, and a lot of their installers are. And so I really think that, especially with, you know, I understand where you're coming from, I also respect the fact that you're employed by the, a union who's, you know, I believe yours and Mr. Kraft's job are to get job and work for your union guys, and I think looking out for the taxpayers and the small businesses that are operating in the county, that that should be stricken out, item 11, so.
Okay, well, I, you know, not to diss Trinity Solar panels, but I know there's electrical contractors who...
Can I speak to that then? I'll speak to that then.
Who do, who do electrical panels, and who put them in and install them, and, you know, safety, OSHA, fall protection, scaffolding, everything you need to do solar panels that are addressed in an apprentice program and not by going to Craigslist to find people to put your panels up, is helpful, and a job on the county level that has to be prevailing wage anyway, and has to follow our guidelines for procurement for that type of, it's going to be more than $400,000. I would feel safer to have somebody who actually has people who went through, I mean, they're electrical panels, I don't want to see somebody get electrocuted and fall off the roof and bounce onto, you know, Main Street here because they weren't trained and grabbed the wrong lead or something, so.
But would they not, would not, they not, if, wouldn't they still have to have the license to do it?
I don't know that much about the solar panel industry and the licensing procedures.
Well, I mean, even any of them, you know, to have an electrical license or to do it, you could still have that and not necessarily fit into a Class A apprenticeship program.
Right.
And it's really only unions that fit into that, and so I think it's a disservice...
I can't speak for the IBEW, but I know I sleep a lot better when I'm in a building that was wired by them, so, you know, I mean, and it's not, you know, there's, there are non-union electrical contractors that have apprentice programs through the ABC and all that other nonsense that's out there.
But that doesn't qualify.
Okay.
I've reached out to them.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Thank you. I just want to say that if a company like Trinity, or Tesla, or Momentum, or any of those entities had a contract that required you to have and service panels or install them, you could subcontract to an IBEW or to anybody who was a Class A apprenticeship if that was the requirement of the area. So that doesn't preclude you from hiring a company like that or installing, but I think that in the county, all projects over $250,000, or there's a threshold of some sort.
An extra prevailing wage.
And wouldn't that, by necessity, require a the Class A?
No.
Usually.
So he's saying yes, and you're saying no, so who's right?
Well, I'm telling you, it does not. So you have to pay the wage, it does not need to be in an apprenticeship program. And, and the other part of it, so, you're right, so they can subcontract it out, so now just to satisfy this clause in there, we're jacking the price up on the taxpayers of the county for a project that didn't have to be that way.
Can I have the floor?
That's not necessarily true.
Ms. Heffner was next.
I just wanted to say that you spoke last night, and you gave an example about the military, and there's definitely a paragraph in here, which I know last night the answer was no, but it very clearly states that, that military service and that trade or craft would qualify, so the example you gave could possibly qualify. I don't think it excludes it.
No, no, so that's experience, that is not, the military is not the Class A, that's a separate item in there.
Well, could we, could we say certification?
But it comes under that, it comes under that, it's under 11, and then there's a separate paragraph under number 11 in that, because it states that a military service would otherwise deemed qualified by an appropriate training such as military service and not trade or craft. So given the example you gave last night, I think that company would qualify.
Yeah, and again, I, I don't think an apprentice program or a qualified apprentice program is a bad thing. I like people who are qualified to do work, I mean, irregardless of where you come from, I really like people who know what they're doing. Mr. McGee, you wanted to say something?
Sure, and the, there's no words that say union in this document, not one word says union or non-union. There is, there is a tremendous amount of apprenticeship programs in the state of Pennsylvania, they're not all union programs. There's some, there's some qualified non-union firms that also have these programs, and it would not exclude those folks. This is all about the responsibility piece that this county needs on these projects, and that's why we raised the threshold. We also need a qualified skill level of workers in this area, in this county, and, you know, to, to work on our projects, and I don't think that, I actually think the educational piece enhances this ordinance, and I think that if, by removing it, 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 it opens up a big hole. If, if we're flying planes, you would want somebody that has the experience of schooling, okay? This is an educational piece, it's a safety awareness piece, it's a risk minimus, it's a, it's a, it's to minimize risk. We're going to be paying money, we're going to be paying prevailing wages to the workers, wouldn't we want them to be the most trained? Wouldn't we want them to put our electrical panels together most trained? Wouldn't we want them to install our plumbing correctly so we don't have a problem? The parking deck issue that I brought up yesterday, we, all this, this, look, and in the future, this stuff, you're going to see more of this apprenticeship, just like we went through and got rid of all the data processing language, okay? like we went through and got rid of all the data processing language, okay? Moving forward, there's more money coming from the government to, to fund apprenticeships. They're in manufacturing now. They want people to educate and train their workforce, and we need that in our area to do the work in this building and in the county buildings. So, I'm going to agree to disagree with you.
Right.
All right, but anyway, I appreciate your comments.
And just, just to answer real quick about the flying, so I consider myself and many that fly with me and seek my employment, consider me a safe pilot. There's different avenues you could take, but this would be parallel to saying, the only way you can become a safe pilot, the only way we recognize a safe pilot is if you went through the flight safety program, not if you went to CAE or SIMCOM or through the military, where only recognized that this one avenue is what makes you a safe pilot.
Ms. Zarensky?
Is there any equivalent training to Class A apprenticeship?
Uh, Mr. McGee?
That is not union?
Yeah, but Mr. McGee, you want to name him off?
So, can we, can we satisfy the language of this by saying Class A apprenticeship or equivalent, or equivalent training as an amendment, just to satisfy that and to move on?
You could propose an amendment, but I wouldn't be favorable to it myself.
Well, there's some, there's some BAT and...
What's a BAT?
It's a, it's a Bureau of Apprenticeship Training. So, that's, that's the reason why that, that's in here, because you're going to see a lot of companies moving into this. I mean, we want them to move into this.
Why is this specific language used then, and we cannot use equivalency or equivalent?
Well, there's a military piece that, that we put in there, okay? And that's, that's to help the veterans that come back from the service and some of their training, so that's why that was added.
I would feel because, because our equivalent opens up, equivalent can mean just about anything if you want to argue one word.
Not if you decide, define what Class A apprenticeship is.
And, and this is something that's been, this has been adopted in a lot of other areas, and, and it's, it's, it's the latest, and, and it, and it works pretty well.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking questions.
And a lot of the places had some, there's reasons why they put it in place, is because they had very bad experiences, similar to what we had with the bridges, I mean, with the parking deck. Okay?
But you did say that Class A apprenticeship doesn't necessarily mean union. There are other Class A equivalencies, so what is the adversity to putting equivalency and defining it as something different?
I, I, I'm really comfortable with this language, and I, and I looked at it, and I, and I just think it's, it's...
I get it, I get it.
It's the best practice language.
Is there any other discussion on apprenticeship programs and Mr. Deeds' objections to this ordinance?
I don't think it'll fly.
Any other discussion or anything else about the ordinance?
Can I, can I offer up an amendment to just say Class A apprenticeship or equivalent?
You could.
And I second it.
I'm just, I'm just...
We have an amendment and a second.
Look, we're going to, we're just going to try it. We're going to see if it flies.
All right, we have an amendment and a second that says Class A apprenticeship or equivalent. Any discussion on the amendment? I mean, we've discussed it for 10 minutes, but...
We did.
Call for the...
Excuse me, no, this is the term equivalent, and I guess this is the crux of it.
Or equivalent training.
I mean, they're going to have to define that when they go out for, for jobs, and I guess that's the problem, when we use terms like, I mean, that came up with emergency. I came up with equivalent. I, I don't know. I hear what you want to do. I'm just wondering how you're going to define it.
I just want to make it open so that, I mean, I understand that, you know, Class A apprenticeship does kind of have a connotation of union, and I'm not against unions. I like the union. I would employ the IBEW in a heartbeat for solar. I'm telling you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do you want to call for the vote?
Ms. Zarensky?
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. McGee?
No.
Laurie Vargo Heffner?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
No.
Four to four.
Okay, seeing that, any other discussion on this amendment?
No.
Seeing none, I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Sparko Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds?
No.
Passes by a vote of seven to one.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other old business to bring in front of council tonight?
Yeah, go find it.
Seeing none, new business. I have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending North Hampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property." Mr. McGee, I believe you're the sponsor of the ordinance, so I need a second. Mr. McGee, do you want to sponsor your ordinance?
Yes.
For the second. Mr. Heckman? Okay, "The public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at the June 7, 2018 meeting." Next thing on the agenda is the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the North Hampton County Home Rule Charter, Article 7, Financing." Mr. Deeds, you're going to sponsor that?
Yes.
Do I have a second sponsor? Seeing none, it dies on the floor for the third time. All right. Number three, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending North Hampton County Administrative Code, Article," what are we on, four here? Department of Fiscal Affairs, Article 4, Department of Human Services, Article 7, Department of Public Works, Article 10, Office to the Sheriff, and Article 12, Finance. I need a sponsor for this.
I'll sponsor it.
I'll co-sponsor.
Ms. Vargo Heffner and Mr. Kuzick. Public hearing debate, possible vote will be held June 7, 2018. Okay, I got consideration of personnel requests, resolution, Gracdale. Mr. McGee, could you introduce the resolution?
It is hereby resolved by the North Hampton County Council that one full-time, I'm sorry, one part-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade CS-15, salary $12,990 shall be eliminated, and one full-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade CS-15, salary $32,475 shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Gracdale effective May 17, 2018. So moved.
And we had a discussion last night in personnel on this, and I believe everybody was here again. Do we have any more discussion on this?
Uh-uh.
Oh, you weren't here. You were at the induction of your son to the Marine Corps. Sorry.
I got the gist of it, though.
Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Sparko Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
And Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of seven to one.
Okay, Mr. Heckman, you're going to be on. We have consideration of administrative code, Article 13, Contracts. We're going to go one at a time, okay?
Sure.
Number A, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Could you please read the, "Therefore Be It Resolved"?
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to award a contract to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania for property and liability insurance.
We had a discussion last night in the finance committee meeting. It was moved forward unanimously. Is any more discussion on that? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Next thing on our agenda is Gilmore and Associates. Mr. Heckman, please.
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive to award a two-month contract extension to Gilmore and Associates as set forth in the attached documentation.
And again, this was discussed last night at the finance committee. Any questions, concerns? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Next thing we have on the agenda is item C, two-way communications. Mr. Heckman?
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with two-way communications, and we talked about that a lot.
And is there any other discussion on this particular contract? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Up to number D, KC Mechanical.
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with KC Mechanical.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this particular? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Next thing we have is Johnson, Mirren, and Thompson Incorporated.
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Johnson, Mirren, and Thompson Incorporated.
We had discussions on this last night. Is there any other questions, concerns on this one? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Next thing, item F, manpower. Mr. Heckman?
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with manpower.
Discussion with this one last night also. Any other discussion, questions, concerns? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
And the last one we have here is Eckert, Seaman, Sharon, and Merlow. Mr. Heckman?
Now, "Therefore Be It Resolved" that the North Hampton County Council authorizes the county executive to award a contract to Eckert, Seaman, Sharon, and Merlow.
We had discussion last night. Questions? We may have, Mr. Kuzick, do you have any other questions on that one?
No, not really a question. I just think that this is something that could have been handled by a local firm, and that would have been my preference.
Any other discussions, concerns, questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarensky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
And Mr. Deeds?